Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, and welcome to the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for June. I don't think we need to say anything, do you? About Mr. Kennedy's presence? No? Okay, good. All right. Good. Good evening. This is the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment for Tuesday, June 18, 2024. Welcome, everyone. We have two items of new business and then several items of other business as well. Before we get going, I'll introduce the board to my far left, Mark Lemus, alternate member, Laura Davies, S.R. Olson-Murphy, vice chair, to my far right, Laura Montagno, alternate member, to my media right, Teresa Page, clerk, and my name's Bob Pryor, and the chair. The first item of new business will be the application of IS Realty Trust for a variance from Article 4, Section 4.3, Schedule 2, Density and Dimensional Regulations Residential, to permit the subdivision of a 5.5-acre parcel into three residential lots, with two of the lots having less than the required minimum lot frontage. Subject property is located at 100 Linden Street and Patricia Avenue in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel 104-71, and this is ZBA Case 24-5. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. The record had been avoided with no engineering, and Sir Ian Winter was in the audience with us. I don't know if you folks remember that a number of years ago, we had been before the planning board and actually got... A number of years ago, we had been before the planning board and actually subdivided this parcel. It was conditionally approved, and it showed the division of this lot out, which I'm calling Lot 3 now. It actually was Lot 5 at that point, and we showed the extension of Patricia Ave to come down about 400 feet to produce three additional lots in here. They decided not to do that for a number of reasons, particularly because of the cost of the construction of the road. Also, as they thought about it, and you must know that Ian's dad, Sandy, very sick, and then eventually succumbed to cancer, so he's no longer with us. So their desire now is just to simply divide this into two lots, of course dividing the third lot off, which on it, this whole property, which is nearly six acres, there's an existing dwelling, which is access from Linden Street by way of a right-of-way that would be carved off and on its own. One of the benefits to the subdivision is that currently it's on an existing well and a septic system, so that would go away. There was a condo development that went over here, and Mr. Winter allowed them to come through his property to bring sewer and water, which made a lot of things nicer out here for the environment, because there are some wetland resource areas. So one of the things that will happen is that this sewer and water would be continued through, so that this existing house can get off of the sewer system, which would be great, because there are adjacent wetlands right next to the structure. So the hope is to allow this reminder of the parcel to be divided into lots 1 and 2. His mom would hopefully build a house on Lot 1, and Ian and his family would build a new house on what is Lot 2. Why we're here is because we don't have adequate frontage without producing a very expensive roadway. The road that was proposed, as I said, was about 500 feet. The impact that it causes in this area, I'm very happy to see that they would come and propose this, but we do need relief, because we only have 50 feet of frontage, which is at the end of Patricia Ave. So the hope would be is that you guys would grant a variance, see that there was merit to this proposal, they would share a driveway that would come in. There's no need to fill any wetlands in this proposal whatsoever. We do work within the buffer, so we're going to have to get some approvals from the planning board. We'll work with the Conservation Commission to do that. I would think that the Conservation Commission would be thrilled at this proposal, as opposed to what the impact was on the last one, but we can't go anywhere, obviously, and ask the planning board to divide this without the grace that we need from this board.
Can I just clarify what you were saying about the sewer? All three parcels will be hooked up to sewer in the after?
Yes, Laura. So currently, what happens is that the sewer ended here, and then the condo development came in, and the developer of this piece actually approached Sandy at the time and said, hey, is it possible to be able to come through here? Linden Street, as everybody knows, has its own issues with floodplain and those sorts of things, so that was a good suggestion and a good idea, which came to fruition. So the sewer is already in here.
Oh, so it's not just an easement, there's actually existing sewer through there?
Yes, sir. There's existing sewer that runs through here currently, and what we would be doing is we would be continuing or placing a new sewer line from here to tie into the existing sewer that's...
Plus drops for the two new houses.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Boyd, you said that this went to planning several years ago. Did it also come to ZBA?
I don't remember needing ZBA relief on it, but I did bring a copy of the plan.
I sort of remember it.
Yeah. I don't think we needed relief.
The minimum frontage.
There's actually a copy of the plan, if you wanted to look at it, but it's... Compare the limited impact of this to the great impact of that, I think, just as a win.
Oh, so you're going to put it in a cul-de-sac?
Yes.
From Patricia?
From Patricia, yeah.
From Patricia, yeah. Yeah, okay. Are there any other questions from members of the board for Mr. Boyd?
So the existing dwelling is going to remain in the family, and they're going to add two more homes that are also going to be in the family, or is that...
I think that they... Laura, I think that they probably would sell this. They have no need for the home. It's existed there for decades. I don't know how old that house is, maybe Doug can help, but it's been there a long, long time.
It's not really relevant, just wondered. Okay.
Okay. So the only specific relief being sought here this evening is for the frontage?
I believe that's all we need, sir, yes.
So the frontage that will be provided, what was the number on that, did you see?
It's 25 feet for each lot.
So the only frontage is where Patricia Avenue abuts. We use the word avenue somewhat metaphorically.
Yeah.
Right. So where Patricia abuts the lot is what's considered frontage.
And that Patricia Avenue right-of-way is 50 feet wide, and it's coincident with the property here. And it obviously was built in with the forethought, back when Patricia Avenue was done, back in the 80s, that eventually the road may push through, so that they didn't deny access to this property. But I think, I'm happy that the big development isn't going in.
So the lot line between Lot 3 and lots 1 and 2 is already recorded in the deeds?
No, sir. That subdivision, we never printed a final mylar.
So right now, it's one lot?
So right now, it's currently this entire tract. So this is a new lot line as well.
Okay.
But it needs no relief, because it takes its frontage. This is the technical frontage for the property other than...
Correct. That fronts on Linden?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you, Henry. Any other questions from members of the board? Okay, thank you. Anybody else going to present from your side, or is it just you this evening?
I think it's just me, Ryan Solo.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Right. Well, I guess at this point, what we'll do, having heard the presentation from the applicant, is to open this up to members of the public. And so the protocol is anyone who would like to speak behalf, or again, a proposal, certainly welcome to do so. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and your residence, and then after the public is done speaking, Mr. Boyd will have a chance to speak again. Would anyone like to address the board about this application?
I just have a quick question. The number, I know this is brought up before, the numbering system for...
Could you tell us who you are?
I'm sorry. My name is Alan Mayo. I resonate at 1 Patricia Avenue, which is right next to the property in question. This was brought up a couple of years ago, and I think Ian was aware of this. There was some question about whether Patricia Ave was going to, if it was going to be called a circle, or what the name of it was going to be, or would it be an extension of Patricia Ave with renumbering of all the homes along Patricia Ave?
I will let Mr. Boyd clarify this, not now, at the end. However, my sense is that Patricia Avenue is not going to extend. It's going to be a driveway from the end of Patricia.
Yeah, I wasn't aware how the numbering system was going to be existed for two homes.
With this plan, which Mr. Boyd showed me, which was from 2019, now five years ago, 8/1/19, it was intended to be a cul-de-sac that was an extension of the road.
Yeah, and 1 Patricia was going to be a part of that.
And that's no longer...
Okay, that's the only question I have.
1 Patricia, your driveway's not on Patricia, your driveway's on the parallel, the other road, right?
No, we're on Patricia.
Your driveway's on Patricia?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, Patricia, we're right up at the beginning of the property, where you talked about, but that's our house right there. Our driveway just extends to where our house is. I just had a question about the numbering system, that's all.
I can't imagine there would be any change, Mr. Esmond?
Yeah, let me kind of straighten that out a little bit. When the five-lot subdivision was going in at the end of Patricia, that road was going to have a different name.
Okay.
It was going to stop, yeah, our E911 response, and we're responsible for addressing, I think I explained to you, and we know Patricia Ave is not numbered correctly for...
And you can't have a house less than one?
Yes, you can. Well, yeah.
One half?
Well, they don't allow us to do one halves anymore, but we will have to work with Ian on how we are going to address that. That'll be our, to make sure it complies with the E91.
Yeah, I just brought up, because I didn't know if our number would change.
No, you're all set. So people on Patricia Ave, hopefully, I mean, unless, and I've had people on Patricia Ave say, we would like it changed, to make sure, no, to make it right.
Make it consistent, right. I haven't seen it.
Well, I mean, the numbering should have started at Court Street.
Right.
As you turn in.
Right.
You know, but it doesn't. It does the direct opposite.
Interesting. Oh, right, one, of course, is the same.
One is the end of the road.
Who knows?
So we will, we will...
Discuss with the developer.
We'll take care of that.
Mr. Mayo, thank you very much. Anyone else from the members of the public like to say anything, pro or con? Hearing none, I will close the public session. Henry, do you feel the need to say anything in rebuttal? Okay. With that, we will close the public session and move to deliberations. This is fairly straightforward, is about as straightforward as we can get. We certainly have no objections from abutters, and I don't see a need to charge through and articulate each one of the variance criteria unless somebody else does.
Nope.
Any discussion, any comments, concerns?
I think it's a pretty low-impact solution for viable use of land.
Especially as contrasted to this, which had a much greater impact.
You know, given that none of the abutters object, I don't see any objection, from my point of view either.
The only question I had was about the sewer, which it's going to be on municipal water and sewer. I don't know if we need to make that a condition or not.
It sounds like there's municipal sewer.
Illegally would have to, because of the size of the lot.
Say it again.
Because of the size of the lots.
All three.
That's not enough, there's not a plan to do.
They would not be able to do just a septic field on the smaller lots.
Gotcha.
But the fact that it's being proposed to hook up to what is now called Lot 3 is an option, do we feel the need to make that a condition? I think that's, I mean, Lot 3 is fine the way it is. Lot 3 is fine the way it is. I think it's an option. I don't think we should force them to put in some 500 feet of sewer line if they don't want to.
Well, we don't want to put it on a field either.
It's already on a field.
No, I know that one, but the other...
No, the other two have to.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Lot 3...
Where is the existing leach, oh, the leach field for Lot 3?
It's behind the house, and...
So close.
Yeah, that's fine, that's going to remain.
That's an interesting question. Do we know if the existing leach field is going to be impacted by the lot line adjustment? In other words, would part of the existing leach field be, end up on Lot 2?
It can't.
2?
No, absolutely.
It can't?
Can't.
Okay.
Is that answered?
I am.
Okay. Laura, you had a question?
Nope.
Nope? Good. I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the application as presented for the 100 Linden Street and Patricia Ave subdivision.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. We never went through the procedure, did we?
No.
I believe Laura's the voting member on this one, since she said aye, and Mark didn't say a word.
I didn't get told to, so I was just going to be quiet and let everybody go.
So we do it. I jumped ahead.
That's funny. You get the next one.
You get the next one. Sorry, I'll be quiet on the next one.
No, no, I'm fine.
No, you get the next one.
Henry, you're approved 5-0. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. May, appreciate it.
Thank you for making that easy.
All right. We have the application of Dennis Byrie for a variance from Article 4, Section 4.3, Schedule 2, Density and, there's a certain pattern this evening, isn't there? Density and Dimensional Regulations Residential, to permit the subdivision of a 4.47-acre parcel into two single-family residential lots, with both lots having less than the required minimum lot frontage. Subject property is located at 165 A Kingston Road in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. This is Tax Map Parcel 115-12 and ZBA Case 24-6. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Bruce Scammon with A Manual Engineering and James Verrett and Associates, here representing Mr. Byrie tonight.
Sorry, I pronounced it incorrectly.
That's okay.
I had a 50/50 chance of getting it right.
He's not in the audience, so he won't hear. I have a letter from him saying that I can speak for him. I believe it's already on record.
It is, however, it does say Planning Board, and this is the zoning board, so we'll be okay.
Okay. He had surgery today, so he couldn't make it tonight. We're here to discuss the parcel. Currently, Mr. Byrie runs his excavating business out of here.
This is an application that we saw several months ago, and, well, this is a parcel which was subject to a different application several months ago. I don't believe you...
It's my, I was not here, so...
You were not involved in that. So we are familiar with the property.
Excellent. So there's a long right-of-way that comes in, it is a rear lot, it's over four acres, and it is non-conforming in the residential zone, being used as a business. We believe that this will be an upgrade to put it into homes, similar uses as the buildings and properties around them. The existing driveway and right-of-way will be accessed and to get the frontage for these two lots going off of it, at the extent of it. The overall private right-of-way already has, to create the two lots, will have enough frontage, actually, on a private right-of-way, on the lot to your left, and the lot to your right would only be 25 feet of frontage. So we have 62, 70, just around 300 feet of frontage on one lot, but to pull this around and only have 200 feet of frontage here, and 125 feet of frontage here, would make this an odd lot. It would make the second driveway have to come off closer to this wetlands, and we're trying to prevent the, use the existing driveway and prevent any impact, environmental impact, on this side lot.
Your tax map shows that the parcel does not have any road frontage.
Correct. It does not have public right-of-way frontage. It has a private right-of-way for frontage.
Is that, how does that impact us as far as frontage is concerned?
I think we, so basically, it would be the same as some other lots that we've done where, you talking about the easement?
I'm just talking about the fact that essentially the lot has no frontage on a public right-of-way.
Correct. So I guess the frontage for the existing lot is 50 feet right now.
And that's the width of the easement?
Correct.
Okay. So you're proposing splitting that between the two lots?
Yes.
Correct.
Kind of like what we just did.
This would be a private, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Kind of like what we just did. You know, I think we've done it up on Highland Street.
Yeah.
They had 30 feet of frontage, and kind of the same sort of situation, but...
So you're proposing a private road all the way from Kingston Road in?
A private driveway, more than a private road, yes. I just want to, because it's just the two residents.
So just to clarify, there's easement access to Route 111.
Correct.
Not fee ownership.
Correct.
And that has been in place, and it benefits these parcels, that easement benefits these parcels.
Correct.
But now, we would like to add another lot to that.
Yes, and change the use. So...
I have no problem with the use, I just want to make sure that we've got our...
Absolutely.
Dot our i's and cross our t's, as it were, as far as the legal aspects are concerned.
We did this probably two decades ago, out on 111A for Mr. Atwood, you know, the rear lots, where we used a private right-of-way as the frontage, so...
ZBA was much more meaningful to me.
Just, I've done it here in town before. We...
So the intention is to sell each lot separately, as opposed to making it into a condominium?
Correct.
But there would be, in the deed, a shared right-of-way that would be maintained jointly by the two owners?
There's an existing right-of-way that accesses this property, and instead of having a commercial use for Mr. Byrie, this would now be two residential uses.
Okay.
So... And that, the thought of putting in a road, a full-town road on that 50-foot right-of-way, doesn't make a lot of sense, just similar to the last applicant, to put in a road out to there for two homes, doesn't make a lot of sense environmentally or economically. So that would be the hardship that would be encumbered if you said no, and we had to put in a road out there.
Or it would have to remain a single-family...
Correct.
Parcel. There is an opt, there's always an option.
There's always an option.
There's always an option.
Or you could go back to the condo development of some sort and try to go down that. I don't know if that was, came to this board, is that what you were saying?
No, it was, it was an industrial use.
It was auto repair stuff.
Auto repair, okay.
So Doug, have you examined the language of the existing access easement, just to make sure it's...
It's legal, yes, it's clean.
Sounds good.
And it's just, yeah, it's like you said, it's not fee ownership, so it's, somebody owns the prop, this young lady owns the property underneath.
Sure.
You're just past it as you're going out.
You have to go down my driveway to get to Rivias, to get, so my, I'm 163, he's 165.
Okay, you're actually not supposed to be talking at this point. That's all right. Doug invited you to, but you shouldn't, because you're not at the microphone, we don't know who you are. Please continue. We've interrupted you enough, Mr. Scammon. Please continue.
No worries. No worries. The more information we know, the better it is for you guys to make a decision.
Usually, yeah, yeah.
So our butter comes down the same driveway. It's her property and drives into the home right here.
Got it.
Okay.
And she's known Mr. Byrie because he's been there for three decades, probably? I don't know. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have asked that question.
We'll get to that, no.
I have a question. Same, is this going to be on the municipal water and sewer or are these?
These are public, not public water and sewer. We have done test pits on, on these lots. This is a reserve area, this is a reserve area. We're showing a possible well here and a possible well here. So we would have to go to the planning board and go through that whole approval process and review drainage and sewers or.
Right.
Sub-surface and.
You just have to clear with us first.
Just have to.
Water and sewer doesn't go past pick-up.
So when you say reserve area, can you tell me what that means a little bit more?
Sure. So a reserve area, you have to have a test pit that passes the town regulations. There is an area that should be kept until you actually design a system. It's an area to prove that the town can say, oh, they have enough room for leach fields. So it really, there's no binding to even put the leach field in that area. It's just to prove that we could put a se, field there. So that we don't build or design or subdivide land that can't sustain a home. So this is a kind of an old pit, a gravel pit area, and so there's, there's some really good soils and other places, I think before Mr. Byrie had it, they might have over-escavated out in the back or it starts to get wet back there. So we went out with Mike Cuomo, the, from Rockhampton Conservation District and had an excavator, dug test pits to prove that they would satisfy the town, state, and perks.
Thank you. I just was unfamiliar with that term.
No worries. That's why we're here today.
I recall from the previous application, there was a question about, I don't know if it's a permanent or seasonal wetland in the top right corner of that map.
Top left.
Up here?
Nope, other side.
Up here?
Yep.
Yeah, and I'd say that there's a pond someplace.
Right.
Off here also.
Okay.
Those are off, off-site that, you know, the setbacks were not anywhere near, near them.
You have enough.
And we had, I believe it was GOV Environmental helped there to do these wetlands delineation.
So we haven't touched the use at all. I mean, residential's great, happy to have that. I think that's better than what was proposed several months ago and it's probably better than what's on there right now. However, I seem to recall there was some question about mitigation from previous use. Have you dealt with that at all? I mean, I don't wanna go approving it if it's.
Mitigation in what sense? Just?
It was an industrial use. And there's a question about what might be some, there was some questions about perhaps there might be some, what's in the soil?
I don't, I don't recall it that way. I recall it was more, we were concerned about what the, what the applicant was intending to put in there and concerns of runoff from the automotive. I don't think that there was, I don't remember speaking about.
There was nothing about mitigation of what's, so you have no concerns about the soils or anything that's out there?
No.
You're not gonna?
I think it, it does say that there's some stockpiles on there. There's some large piles and that through the construction process, those would be used and leveled out to smooth, smooth out the site.
Piles of earth material?
Yes, it had an excavation company, so there was some soils stored.
Okay.
Right in the center portion of the lot, when we went out to do the test pits.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, there was some crushstone. There was a couple concrete storage where there was crushstone. There's a landscaper that works out of here also.
So there's a port pad or something?
Here's the existing conditions.
It doesn't really matter to us.
Sure. So there's these concrete barriers where they have different crushstones and materials for a landscaper. As you can see, there's a pile right here that was old gravel that was, was piled there that I'm sure they're gonna use for grading around the home when it'll be used, you know, as a residential use. You wouldn't wanna have, maybe you'd want a little pile there to get to go sledding on or something, but you know, you know what I'm saying? Most likely the, the builder will use it in, in making the driveways and grading around the home.
Sounds good.
Mr. Eastman, can I ask you a question, please? Do we have to make anything about this going to planning board a condition of approval here? Is it automatically?
It automatically will go.
It'll automatically go?
Automatically, yes.
Okay. So everything environmental and planning will be taken care of?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, sir?
I can read in our reasons for requesting the variance, or you can say that they were per written.
Members of the board have already read them, so.
Okay.
If we have questions.
Absolutely.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Scammon? Crickets. I hear crickets.
I think my questions have been answered with our many interruptions.
Hearing none? Thank you. Right. As before, we will now open it up to the public. Anybody who wishes to speak pro or con the application, keeping in mind that what's being sought here is a very, very narrow and specific request, which is simply to allow this parcel to be divided into two residential lots where there is not sufficient frontage. This is an opportunity for you to speak if you would like to. Oh, you don't have to. I don't wanna put you, I don't wanna put you on the spot.
I'll just look at the map, but I'll also, sure, why not? So I'm Karen Vences. I live at 163 Kingston Road and my driveway, you have to go off 111 in my driveway to go down to the back of where all this is going, so.
Can you bring the microphone with you if you're gonna?
Yeah, sure.
Look at the plan while you're talking?
Thank you.
Yes. So what I'm trying to, what I don't understand is when you were saying about the 50 feet footage and then?
You address us and then he'll answer later.
Is the, the footage of 50 feet? I'm, I'm not clear on what that is.
The frontage?
That's an easement over the property that exists there and I'm assuming all of it is over your property as opposed to being divided with, you're at 163, so the easement is probably exclusively on that part. Yeah, I got a nod on that one, as opposed to on 165. That means that there's an easement that you could not build on that 50-foot strip.
Okay.
Because that would isolate the parcel behind.
For them behind, okay. All right, all right, good.
So easement, just to be clearer, an easement is a property right that, that in this case benefits your neighbor, but it gives them a right to travel over your property. They can't do anything they want, but you can't do anything to block them from traveling over your property.
Right, okay.
And it's permanent in this case.
Okay.
So that's all.
So then when you say if there's, if there's two lots, then there's, they each have 25 feet?
That's how we would have to use it for.
Yeah, gotcha.
The calculation here.
Got you, okay.
Essentially divided in half.
Okay. If they do do the two houses, would our numbers, house numbers change? I know the previous person asked, but I'm wondering, because whoever can.
You have, if there are numbers available. So you're 160.
I'm 163.
And next door is 165.
165 and Dennis is 165A.
Okay, so, yeah, I think that's pretty easy. We will probably end up doing 165A and B.
A and B, okay.
Yes. We, they don't, they kinda discourage, you know, As and Bs and stuff like that. What about, so the next lot up, who owns that property? Oh, hi. What is your, so what is your address? Oh, okay, all right. Okay, I was, I was saying, because sometimes it jumps like three or four numbers and therefore there would be the ability to give each lot a separate.
There's a 169 and there's a 171. The only one that's missing is 167, but then that would put it out of order and require 165 to be renumbered.
Right, right, okay.
And I think it was reserved because there's a little, little triangular parcel on the road.
Yep, there is.
Yeah, so that's probably reserved for that.
We, that will be all worked out with and obviously you will be involved and yourself if there's gonna be any changes, but.
Yeah.
I don't, I, I think we're gonna be fine.
Yeah, okay. Who's, all right. I don't think I have any other, anybody have any questions for me?
No, thank you. Appreciate it. Would anyone else like to make a comment, pro or con? Well, this is making our job easier on your kids. This is good. All right. Do you wish to say anything additional before I close public session?
Scammon?
You all right?
All set.
Okay. We're gonna close the public session, move into deliberations, and this time I will remember to make the clarification that Mr. Lemus is the voting member on this and while you can participate in the discussion, you're not voting.
Got it.
Got it. Good. Okay, again, this seems to be, oh, Henry forgot his chart from before. I'll get that to him. Again, this seems to be a vastly improved application to the previous proposed use, which we were not able to approve some three or four months ago. I can't remember exactly when it showed up.
Leave it, it's fine. I'll get it.
Yes, ma'am.
So any questions, comments from members of the board?
I just have one quick comment. The application references 150 feet as what would be required under the zoning, but if, under footnote one for Schedule Two, because this is not on municipal water and sewer, the minimum lot frontage would be 200 feet. Just to clarify that for granting a variance, it would be from the 200 feet rather than the 150 stated application.
The relief being sought is 150 foot as opposed to 100?
Well, not exactly, because it's 150, it's.
They need 200 and they've got 50.
Road frontage.
It would be two lots.
Yeah, they need 400.
Right, they would need 400.
Ew.
Ew.
Good, good catch on that.
Yep.
Water and sewer is 150, right?
Yeah.
Without water and sewer is 200.
200 each. Okay, thank you. If we make a motion, then that would be important to say, the specific relief being, being granted. Good catch is right. Any other comments or questions? Mark, Laura, Esther?
I agree, it's an improvement from the previous application and based on the testimony we heard before, this should make the abutters happier.
So the butters aren't here, so.
Well, yeah, the only abutter here, the, the people on whatever that little road was.
Yeah, Farmington.
Farmington, thank you. Were out last time, but not this time, so that's a good, good sign.
Yeah, it's more consistent with the, with the zoning and with the master plan's description of that area.
Yeah, absolutely. Good. Okay. I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve the application of Dennis Byrie for a variance from Schedule Four, Section 4.3, Schedule Two, Density and Dimension regulations residential to permit the subdivision of a 4.47 acre parcel into two single-family residential lots with both having less than the required minimum lot frontage, which would be 200 feet. In this instance, the subject property is located at 165A Kingston Road in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, tax map parcel 115-12, ZBA case 24-6.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved in second. The most thorough motion I've heard in several years. Thank you. That was as detailed as you could possibly get. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. You're good. Five zero. Approved.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for, to Mr. Byrie for coming up with a solution that satisfies the town and the neighbors and adds more residential property to the town. All good. Righty, righty. And thank you to the abutters for coming up. What air conditioning?
I mean, it's like 90 degrees outside.
So at this point in the meeting, we have three items of additional, of other business and I will recuse myself, as I believe Laura, Ms. Montagno will as well, for the next case and Vice Chair Olson Murphy will take over.
Sounds weird to hear my name that way.
Okay, so our first order of other business is from River Woods, ZBA case 24-4, requesting for rehearing a variance from Article Six, Section 6.1.2D to permit parking within the required 100-foot landscape buffer in the R1 Low Density Residential District. So we've all, we have enough, yeah, we have four people, so we have a quorum, so we can review this. We have all received their explanation of why they feel we should have a rehearing. Does anybody have any thoughts?
So there's no one from the applicant here? Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct. There's no testimony anyway.
They don't have to be here, okay.
It's all, it's all the foreview and that's it.
Yes, I guess we're looking for us to honor the request. We either need to decide that there's new evidence provided or that the board's decision was made in error. I don't see any new evidence provided in the write-up. Does anybody else feel differently?
No, I don't see anything new.
I wasn't presented with any new evidence.
No. So we all agree with you.
Okay.
Even though that was a little goofy.
No, sorry. And so does anybody feel that an error was made on our part based on what was provided?
I do not, and I'd like to point out some specific points of disagreement with the request for rehearing. So the second item, under, I guess, Item D about the hardship, said that the ZBA committed an error in concluding there was no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and its application to the facts at hand. And then further down in that same argument, the board failed to acknowledge that failure to allow 11 parking spaces in the proposed area will likely require redesign to include such parking in the wetlands. And I'd like to suggest that the board was very clear that they have alternatives. They could build a smaller building or they could locate their health facilities elsewhere on their very large site, which I know they don't want to do, but that are, those are their alternatives. They have alternatives. They just don't want those alternatives. And then also Item Three, that we committed an error in concluding that the proposed limited encroachment was unreasonable. They allege that we conflated their question about the size of the proposed health center, no portion of which encroaches into the buffer and which use and location is allowed as a matter of right. And I would say that it's allowed by special exception. So that was a, not quite a clear statement. And then that we failed to take into account the modest amount of buffer that they were requesting. And I think that they've parsed out the request for the 11 parking spaces from their total request in this rehearing, but it wasn't parsed out in the request for the variance from the buffer. And their request for variance from the buffer was fairly, well, it was quite ambitious. So I think that the premise of the buffer is to protect a low-density, single-family residential neighborhood from large-scale developments. And particularly, this proposal is the most visible, most active portion of the site and it was provided with the least. and it was provided with the least amount of buffer around it, and the board felt that the buffer should be respected. So I disagree with that third point, and then I also disagree that we committed an error in failing to understand that their request was driven by a lack of alternatives, alternative sites for the proposed health center. A, they don't need to build a health center, and they were denied the variance for the health center in the first place. Now that they have emerged lot, you know, we've identified alternatives in our previous ruling to include a smaller building, or to renovate and utilize existing spaces. So I, we do continue to insist that alternative locations exist, and they continue to insist that they don't, so we just disagree.
I would add on to that, just to first point out that it's not, could the board have decided something different? It's, could the board have decided what it did? On the, to add on to, I think you commented about the size and the suggestion that the board conflated the issue of the size and the buffer. In reviewing the meeting and the minutes, it's clear that the effect of encroaching on the buffer was the primary consideration, and it wasn't just visuals of the building, it was sound, it was light. So the decision rested largely on the effect of having those parking spaces in, inside of the buffer. Additionally, even with that aside, this, the ordinance itself references sufficient buffer and vegetation to shield the development, so we need to consider what the development is. It's appropriate to consider that, and I think the board did a healthy job of going through the criteria as to the buffer itself.
I would add on that during our initial hearing, we were presented that the abutter to this property, I believe it's Mrs., I'm gonna say it wrong, Hooten, was all right with the encroachment, and then, we then found out that that was not the case, that she did not want the encroachment on the 100-foot space buffer, and thus, there was going to be some hardship implied upon somebody who does not want that sort of buffer that's put in there for that purpose of protecting the surrounding properties. So. But I agree with everybody else and what everybody has said, but I don't think we erred, or that it was-
Even in Item C, where we're talking about the spirit and intent of the ordinance, they asserted that the ZBA conflated our concerns about the proposed size and location of the health center building with the analysis required to determine, I guess you kind of addressed that, Laura. I mean, Teresa, with the, whether the encroachments themselves would alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And the only reason that, I mean, the whole thing is to determine whether the entire proposal alters the essential character of the neighborhood, and the reason they need relief is because they want to build something that is too big to fit into the area they're allowed to build in. And so I think that you can't separate those issues, they're tied together.
Especially since we have requirements on parking for the size and the amount of residents are gonna be within a building. So if you can't fit the amount of parking spaces in the space you have, then you need to limit the size of your building so that you can. Like, that's-
Yeah, the size of the building was definitely referenced as the driver into the buffer, but the buffer was the focus of the conversation in my review.
Do we have a motion?
Not properly said.
I did have one last thing to mention, is that there was a lot of time given in the presentation to the amenities of the building, the size of the rooms, as a reason that they need the space. There was definitely a lot of size in the conversation, but ultimately, I think the decision was appropriate.
Including that what the other variance we were doing was about the size of the building. They wanted 11 additional feet up to another variance, so talking about it is going to happen.
Anything else?
I think covers it for me.
Covering.
Do you want to make a motion, or do you want me to?
Go ahead if you want.
I don't really-
You have no preference. I'll move to deny the motion for, or the request for rehearing by Riverwoods, ZBA Case 24-4, subject property at 7 Riverwoods Drive, Tax Map Parcel 97-23, such original case for a variance from Article Six, Section 6.1.2D, to permit parking within the required 100-foot landscape buffer in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District.
Does anybody want to discuss the motion?
Second.
Mark, you second it?
I second it, yeah.
You're ahead of me, I like it. So, vote. Who's in favor?
Aye.
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 Sounds like the motion, or the request was denied for nothing. Next order of business, our recused people come back.
Thank you.
You are most welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item of business is the election of officers. We're a month late, that's okay. It's all worked out for the best here. I would like to propose, let's see, the, first of all, anyone can vote, but only full members can hold office. So we need a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk. And the candidates that are potential would be the full-time members, which would be Laura Davies, Esther Olson Murphy, Teresa Page, Kevin Baum, and myself. I would like to make a motion that Esther Olson Murphy become the chair, that Teresa Page become the vice chair, and that Laura Davies become the clerk for the following year. Is there a second?
I'm gonna do a-
I'm just making a nomination. I don't, I guess you don't need a second for that, do you?
I don't know.
I have no idea.
I've been through this a dozen times, I should know-
You've done this four times, you should know.
I've done this enough by now.
I should ask Laura if the chair calls, the co-chair calls to her. So do you have a preference to be co-chair or clerk?
Or vice chair? No, I'm, I think it's a great idea for you to have that.
Everyone seems to have the same idea.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yes, they do.
I think you are fabulous at this.
I personally really like the idea of having three women as the three officers. I don't know that we've ever done that before, and I quite like that. I think it's entirely appropriate. And I love the fact that there are people that are gonna be officers that haven't been officers before, or haven't been chair before. This is how it should happen. This is absolutely how it should happen.
I don't actually know, I should know maybe at this point, but I don't know what the clerk does, so.
You're third in line.
You're third in line of succession.
So you lead a meeting if two other people can't.
Okay.
Right.
It does happen.
I can do that.
Yeah.
It does happen.
Right.
Okay.
Good. All in favor of the slate as proposed, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
We have new officers. Would you like to, would you like to do the minutes?
Congratulations.
I will do it.
Do the minutes, because I can't do them anyway.
I've been fighting it since 2018, so I guess I had to break at some point.
Absolutely. About time. Good job, thank you. I'm pleased.
Okay, last order of business. The minutes from the April 16th meeting, since we did not have a June meeting. Did anybody find anything? Have we have any Easter eggs? Because we all know Joanna is very good at this. I did not.
I did a quick skim, so I did not find anything, but I did not do my-
I dug in, but I find no error.
Can I get a motion?
I moved to approve the minutes of the April 16th, 2024, ZBA meeting as presented.
And I probably should say that Bob and Laura, not you Laura, other Laura, cannot vote because you were not present.
Omerito.
So, since we all seem to be in favor, I'm assuming nobody has any objections, or has anything to discuss about the motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Minutes are accepted?
Do we have to vote?
Oh, vote, I missed one.
Redmond, you have the chair.
You're stressing me out. All in favor of accepting the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved for nothing. That's the end of our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Second it.
Meeting adjourned.
Bravo.
Woo!
Yay, congrats.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.